Good afternoon. Good afternoon. If everyone would take their seats so we can get started, please. Good evening, welcome to the Henry County Board of Commissioners, 6:30 Tuesday, February 25th, 2025, regular scheduled board meeting. We will begin our board meeting with our invocation from Pastor Leonard Himes, and he will also lead us in the pledge of allegiance if everyone would please stand.
Good evening, let's pray together. Our Father, we come to thee upon this night. Lord, you've blessed us thus far through February. And, Lord, but yet there's things tonight that must be dealt with and handled. And so, Lord, we invite you into our government through the hearts and lives that we would look to you as decisions are made that would honor you. May we put people and principle in its rightful place. So help in this meeting tonight, lead and guide every element of it. And, Lord, for those that work and serve in this great county, that you'd bless them and their families this evening, those that are out protecting us even now, that you'd give your watch care over their lives. So help us tonight, be with us, bless this meeting. And, Lord, we'll thank you in Jesus' name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated.
I'd like to call our meeting to order. The following planning and zoning item originally advertised for February 25th, 2025, VLC has been postponed by staff. RZ-22-25 Public Hearing postponed. LGS Holdings Group of Tucker. This particular item was in District 1, and this item has been postponed and will not be heard tonight. Next item on the agenda is, are some presentations. Georgia Recreation and Park Association, State Award Volunteer of the Year, Jonathan Penn, if you will come forward.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners, Pillars of Henry County, Henry County residents. Today, we present to you the GRPA State Award for Volunteer of the Year. At this time, I would like to bring up Mr. Thomas White, who is representing GRPA, he is on one of those boards, to present the award to our recipient this year.
Hello, Madam Chair and Commissioners, thank you so much for having me here. Tonight, on behalf of the Georgia Recreation and Park Association's Executive Committee and the Board of Trustees, I want to say thank you to Henry County Parks and Recreation and all that they do for the people of Henry County. But no matter how hard a Parks and Rec Department works, no matter all the efforts that they put in there, it's impossible to do without volunteers. So tonight, I would like to recognize one of those individuals that not only makes a difference here in our community, but in the state of Georgia as a whole. This individual leads Henry County Disc Golf Club in maintaining the disc golf course at JP Mosley Park. His efforts include leading workdays, planning events, executing general course upkeep, and being an ambassador for the sport to our community. He works to grow disc golf in the community. He has led clinics for summer camps, helped the department with the expansion of the disc golf course, and assisted with creating an infrastructure for expanding the disc golf course program. Most recently, he organized and facilitated a professional disc golf association tournament in Henry County, the Liberty Open. His efforts of promoting the JP Mosley Disc Golf Course had led to increased traffic at the course. The expansion has made it one of the premier disc golf courses on the south side of the Atlanta metro. People come from all over the state just to play at the disc golf course. His advocacy in the community has drastically increased the interest the community has for the sport. JP Mosley Disc Golf Course is now one of the largest disc golf courses in the state. It is no longer just a local attraction. Mike's efforts have led to JP Mosley Disc Golf Course being a destination for players in all of the southeast United States. Because of his advocacy, there is tremendous community support for the further expansion of the course. So it is my honor and privilege as Chair of GRPA District 6 and a member of the Board of Trustees to award the GRPA State Volunteer of the Year Award to Mr. Mike Cane.
Good evening, and thank you so much for recognizing the efforts of, I will accept this on behalf of the entire disc golf community in Henry County. There's several of our volunteers that are back here this evening, and I appreciate, I was just kind of heading stuff up. These guys work real hard to make disc golf in Henry County what it is. I thank you for this recognition, thank you again, I appreciate you. And I would like to, when the time is appropriate, to give you all a Henry County Disc Golf frisbee and an open invitation for a private lesson anytime you guys want to come out and try this.
Can we get a picture with you and the volunteers and staff?
That would be wonderful.
Awesome, thank you all so much for what you do. Next item on the agenda is our disparity study update, Susan.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners, pillars of our community. This evening, I have for you the disparity study update. So just as an overview, the Board of Commissioners awarded RFQ 2192 for a comprehensive disparity study to Griffin &amp; Strong, PC. The findings were presented to the Board of Commissioners on February 6th, 2024, by Griffin &amp; Strong. On February 6th, 2024, the Board of Commissioners approved amending Section 2.233, County Purchases Bids, etc., generally, establishing the annual aspirational goals set forth in the comprehensive disparity study. The findings were to set contract-by-contract goals separately for MBE and WBEs based on the various scopes of work. Griffin &amp; Strong recommended that the county employ aspirational goals on a contract-by-contract goal setting in the areas of construction-related services to begin for large dollar amount contracts, and then expand based available resources. Griffin &amp; Strong did not recommend contract-by-contract goal setting for commodities because there are few subcontracting opportunities there. Goals are typically set by the team, including procurement, finance, and the user department to assist in breaking down the scope of work and identifying the availability of firms. These contract-by-contract aspirational goals should be communicated to the prime contractors in this solicitation as a request that the prime contractor aid the county in meeting these goals. Once the prime contractor has submitted its MBE and WBE achievements, it becomes a part of the contract. So we have four categories. Construction, construction-related, non-construction-related, and commodities. Construction, simply to build. Construction-related, architecture, structural, and civil engineering, construction or project management. Non-construction-related refers to anything that is not directly involved in physical building process of a structure, such as landscape material, signage, decor, and even professional services like architectural services. Commodities, simply general office supplies, papers, pens, boxes, computers, etc. So when you hear the term "site visit" or "pre-proposal conference", the department requesting the solicitation determines if a site visit is necessary for the project. A site visit is held to physically inspect the location, which is crucial for making informed decisions about a project. A pre-proposal conference is held to allow potential bidders to gain a thorough understanding of a project's requirements. It ensures that everyone is on the same page regarding project expectations and scope of work. So our aspirational goals, year one. For commodities, the recommended goal was 8.0, we achieved 23.2. Across the top, you can see that 5.8, African-American business, 8.5 was an Asian-American business, and a female-owned business at 8.9. Non-construction-related services, the recommended goal was 8.0, we achieved 71.1. African-American businesses at 41.8, Hispanic-American businesses, 7, female-owned women enterprise at 8.1, and female-owned at 12.2. Construction-related services, the goal was 21, we achieved 50.9. African-American businesses, 3.4, Hispanic-American, 25.1, female-women business enterprise, 5.7, and female-owned, 16.7. Construction-related, the goal was 31, we achieved 38. African-American at 6%, Asian-American at 16%, and Hispanic-American at 16%. The overall award by category for commodities was $15,056. Non-construction-related, $517,259. Construction, $1,485,947. Construction-related services, $1,736,899. So Henry County partnered with OpenGov. As a part of the ordinance changes, a procurement was approved, and the past proposals were only accepted by mail, carrier, or in person. With OpenGov, proposals can be submitted electronically. OpenGov allows a vendor-free registration. It also provides notification for solicitations when opportunities are posted or when addendums are issued, so there's no more missing addendums when they're posted. They'll be notified. So we'll still be posting on State of Georgia Registry because we are required to post goods or services for anything that's $100,000 or more on this State of Georgia's website, but we'll also be using the OpenGov. The first bid we went live with was on February 5th for drainage improvements at Stokes Drive. OpenGov gives us an overview of the vendors who have looked at these proposals. At last glance, 852 project views were already showing up with 76 downloads. The second bid posted on 2/20 for dam and drainage design improvements. Last glance, 214 views with 32 downloads. And some upcoming events I wanted to make everyone aware of. We will be having a vendor expo in conjunction with Montana Young Fraser. She is a small business advocate, she's local here to Henry County. That'll be on March 27th here in the admin building from 8:30 to 10:30. We would like to start doing this twice a year, in the spring and in the fall. And also last year, we held, well, Montana assisted, she held some courses on how to do business with Henry County. This was a four-week virtual course, and then there were some in-person courses where the businesses that signed up or registered for the courses, they came in and they practiced how to present theirself to a buyer. So we would like to do something like that again as well, and that's also in the works. Any questions?
Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the board? Thank you, Susan.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is District 2 Transportation Advisory Committee. Lisa Thurston, effective immediately, term would expire 12/31 of 2026. This is, this is, okay, all right. This is in your district, Commissioner, Vice Chair Robinson, would you like to make the motion?
Yes, ma'am, I would like to make a motion, but if I can have this person in his hands or if I could recognize her, she's present today. Thank you so much, Ms. Lisa, for serving, and yes, I would like, I move to make the motion to appoint Lisa Thurston to District 2 Transportation Advisory Committee.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? Here and none, all in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, congratulations, Ms. Thurston, thank you for serving. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. If I could have our county manager to please come forward and read our consent agenda.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, and pillars of the community. This is your consent agenda for Tuesday, February 25th, at 6:30 PM. Under the county manager, we have a resolution accepting the engagement letter and contract for the newly appointed firm of Buckley, Christopher, and Hensel, PC, to serve as litigation counsel for Henry County. Under the courts, we have a resolution authorizing the Henry County DUI Drug Court to apply for a grant from the State of Georgia Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for fiscal year 2026. We have a resolution authorizing the Henry County Juvenile Treatment Court to apply for a grant from the State of Georgia Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for fiscal year 2026. We also have a resolution authorizing the Henry County Adult Felony Drug Court to apply for a grant from the State of Georgia Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for fiscal year 2026. We have a resolution authorizing the Henry County Resource Treatment Court to apply for a grant from the State of Georgia Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for fiscal year 2026. And we have a resolution authorizing the Henry County Veterans Treatment Court to apply for a grant from the State of Georgia Office of the Governor Criminal Justice Coordinating Council for fiscal year 2026. Under E911, we have an ordinance by Henry County, Georgia, to amend the Henry County Code of Ordinances, Subchapter 6, Sections 3-4-500 through 3-4-506 regarding alarm systems. Under Fire Risky, we have a resolution appointing interim chief Darren Pat Wilson to the Region 4 West Georgia Emergency Medical Services Advisory Council. Under Facility Maintenance, we have a resolution awarding a seal bid, number 25-43, to S&amp;B Roll Off, Inc. of Locust Grove, Georgia, for solid waste removal and disposal service as a unit price agreement with no fixed quantities for one year, with two mutually agreed-upon annual renewals in the amount of $18,435 per month. Under Planning and Zoning, we have two streetlight districts. First resolution is a resolution approving a request for a new streetlight district for West Wind Phase 1 subdivision on Babs Mill Road, located in District 5. We also have a resolution approving a request for a new streetlight district for Cooper Park Phases 1 and 2 subdivision on Chambers Road, District 5. Under the Police Department, we have a resolution awarding an annual contract to Galls LLC to provide body armor and garment fitting for the Henry County Police Department utilizing funds from the Small Equipment Account. Under SPOS, we have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 1,200 square feet of right-of-way and 827.64 square feet of driveway easement, more or less, in Land Lot 153 of the 7th District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through Section 32-3-19, State Route 81 Widening Project Parcel 24. We have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 773.23 square feet of right-of-way, more or less, in Land Lot 152 of the 7th District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through Section 32-3-19, State Route 81 Widening Project Parcel 37. We have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 3,792.06 square feet of right-of-way and temporary driveway easement of 1,350.36 square feet, more or less, in Land Lot 170 of the 7th District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through Section 32-3-19, State Route 81 Widening Parcel 69. And we have a resolution to authorize the acquisition of 9,024.33 square feet of right-of-way, a permanent easement of 1,710 square feet, and a temporary easement of 1,479.49 square feet, more or less, in Land Lot 170 of the 7th District, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to provisions of OCGA Section 32-3-4 through Section 32-3-19, State Route 81 Widening Parcel 81. Madam Chair, this ends the consent agenda.
Are there any questions from the board regarding any items on the consent agenda? Here and none, could I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve? Second.
Got a motion and a second. No further discussion, all in favor?
Thank you.
Motion carries, thank you. We move to our regular agenda. There is an add-on item to the agenda. Commissioner Anglin, I'm going to let you describe or give a, tell us a little bit about this add-on item.
I think I need to make a motion to walk on the item for District 3, is that correct?
No.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
So I make a motion that we walk on the item for District 3 in regards to the moratorium? Is that correct?
Yes, so you're going to get a motion to amend the agenda to add the walk-on item.
Okay, so I make a motion that we amend the agenda to walk on the walk-on item for District 3?
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, all right.
Okay, Kenta, can you come up front, please? Kenta, can you come up front, please? Kenta, do you want me to describe what's going on, or do you want to? Do you have the map also? Okay. So before I read it, I want to make sure everybody knows what's going on. What we're, what I'm getting ready to do is pass a, or vote for a moratorium for District 3 in the Kellytown area. The lots are described in this map right here. That moratorium is going to be until we get our master plan completed, which if everybody in District 3 is aware of, that's exactly what we've done in the North Olah area. So this map shows that area of which we've outlined for Kellytown as described. And those, if folks are wondering, there is a list of all those landlots available with Kenta and them, but they are available here as well. So I am going to read the language now. I would like to call for a moratorium on rezonings, comprehensive plan amendments, lot modifications greater than five acres of total area, residential development applications in the Kellytown area for the map shown on the overhead, and staff provided Excel sheet for the parcels in the said area. This is not to stop private property owners from building single-family residences or accessory structures, but to reject all applications for mass development such as subdivisions or commercial complexes in this area until the master plan for Kellytown has been devised by staff and consultants. Moratoriums on the following area of Kellytown area, rezonings, comprehensive plan amendments, lot modifications greater than five acres of total area, residential development applications. Once again, this does not prohibit a private property owner from building single-family residences or accessory structures, but rejects all applications of mass development such as subdivisions or commercial complexes in this area until the Kellytown master plan area has been devised by staff and consultants. That is my motion.
Got a motion and a second. Got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Any discussion from the board? Here and?
I just want to make a comment.
Yes.
And my comment is, first of all, I just want to thank you, Commissioner Anglin, for doing this, and just for the general public. Just for your awareness, we do these moratoriums, and we know their eyes are upon us. When I say eyes are upon us, that's from the state legislature. The state legislature does not like us to do moratoriums. They don't like anybody to do moratoriums. We do this knowing that we want to plan better communities for Henry County. A lot of times, we get feedback about, you know, you didn't plan for traffic, you didn't plan for all sorts of items. We are doing these because we want to plan for the future. So I commend Commissioner Anglin for doing this in District 3. It's the same reason I did in District 5 for the airport master plan. So I just want to make that comment and say that I support what you're trying to do.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor? Any opposed?
I'm staying due to the lack of information prior to the meeting.
Okay, all right. You got that, Stephen? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is, from the county manager's office, we have, who's presenting? Oh, Ashley is presenting our resolutions. Okay. And every commissioner should have a stack of the resolutions and believe they were all emailed out as well.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and Commissioners. Jamie's going to help me get this pulled up. I have before you seven different resolutions regarding legislative changes that are currently under consideration by the Georgia General Assembly or are proposed that we would like them to consider. For the ease of the presentation, I've put them all in one slide deck, but we are going to need to vote on these as individual resolutions. So the first three that we're going to talk about are going to mirror the policies and priorities that we identified during the legislative breakfast back in December. The first resolution focuses on changes needed to the deannexation process. The resolution supports updating the state's deannexation process to establish clear timeframes and responsibilities for submission to the Georgia Department of Community Affairs. House Bill 521, which addresses the specific issue for county issued property, was passed out of the House Governmental Affairs State and Local Government Subcommittee this afternoon and is slated to go before the full committee tomorrow for a vote. The current version of the bill is not included in your packets, but I have a copy because it just hit today that I will give to the county clerk, if she doesn't mind helping The bill specifies that if a county-owned property is submitted for deannexation, that the receiving municipality will approve that deannexation within 90 days of the filing. Overall, there's been general support of the measure. And with that, Madam Chair, I will yield for any questions.
Are there any questions with regards to this resolution? I will say that today I was at the Capitol to testify before the committee regarding the deannexation and then adding this additional language to the bill so that we would have the ability to move forward on several projects that we're currently working on. And it did pass out of committee unanimously. So I will be back at the Capitol to address the full committee on tomorrow. So Sherri, do we just need to do a motion to accept the resolution?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Can I get a motion to accept the deannexation resolution?
I move to accept the deannexation resolution. Second.
All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you. Up next is a resolution with another priority item from the breakfast regarding fire services. As you may remember, this has been a topic of conversation for the last few years now. The resolution before you encourages the General Assembly to support changes to allow local governments to require sprinklers in townhomes as well as strengthening the information sharing between city fire marshals and the county's responding agency. These efforts will increase fire safety measures not only for the citizens of Henry County, but for Georgia as a whole. This information sharing will increase first responders' access to necessary information for fire protection systems, building layouts, and potential hazards. And with that, ma'am, I will yield for any questions.
Are there any questions from the board with regards to this, the fire services Yeah, yeah. So Johnny is the expert on this. Johnny, can you talk a little bit about this resolution and why it's important?
According to NFPA standards, townhomes are classified as single-family homes, and they're allowing to put six townhomes under one roof. And so, and that's basically called fee simple because they can sell each individual, but they're all under one roof. So for the fire service, we need that changed for the same conditions for a multifamily, such as apartments. And the same standards when it comes to sprinkler systems need to be applied to townhomes as apartment complexes. We just need the language changed to, with authority having jurisdiction, which would give our fire, our fire marshal the ability to tell the developer what needs to be sprinkled and what doesn't outside of a single-family dwelling. And like you said, statewide, but just change that one sentence or add that one sentence, authority having jurisdiction.
And I would like to note that the intention is not to take away the responsibility from the city fire marshals, it's just to ensure that we're sharing all the necessary information.
Absolutely, because it puts our firefighters at risk when they are having to respond to fires and have no idea of plans or any information regarding the structure. So this is a safety matter to protect our, our fire personnel when they are on these calls. And so, can I get a motion to approve?
I move to approve.
Got a motion, got a motion and a second. All in favor? Next item?
Thank you, ma'am. Up next, we have, wow, excuse me. Up next, we have a resolution, which was the final priority item from our legislative breakfast, that is to support the expansion of mental health services. So the resolution before you is primarily an updated version of Resolution 23-285 that we passed on October of 2023. This has been a priority for this board and has been a topic that our Community Resources Division's been tackling over the past year or so. We've talked about this a lot, so I kind of kept this one brief, but if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Yeah, and I would just like to say, from, from the mental health standpoint, because of the lack of mental health facilities and mental health services, what has transpired is that a lot of times, our local jail is used as the mental health hospital. And probably about 30% of our population in the jail has some type of mental health or addiction problem. And so what we are asking is that funding continues to go through the Department of Behavioral and Mental Health Services so that we're able to at least have the opportunity to have funding for various programs. And so we don't want to use our jails as a mental health facility. These individuals that are in crisis need, need assistance, and the jail is not necessarily the answer for that. And so all 159 counties in this state passed a resolution asking the state and the governor to please invest more into mental health so that people can get the services that they need and deserve. So with that said, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, ma'am. The next resolution is another update of a previous resolution that was passed by the board, Resolution 24-64, and should be included in your packet for this one. This is another item that's been a topic of discussion for several years with the board. The current legislation that's pending in reference to sports betting and casino gambling is Senate Resolution 131, which is going to be the first step that would be necessary towards a referendum for legalization. So based off of the current constitution, they can't just pass the law and say, yes, this is going to happen. It has to go to a statewide vote. So this would basically just give that option to the voters of Georgia, let them make the decision on whether or not we would like casino gambling or sports betting. There's several different models that the General Assembly is considering, but this resolution before you is simply focusing on that statewide referendum and allowing that to move forward. As you know, we're home to Atlanta Motor Speedway, and the county has the existing infrastructure in the space that would be needed for development, like a casino, and it could potentially serve as a huge economic driver for the county. Senate Resolution 131 is currently sitting in the Senate Regulated Industries and Utilities Committee. And with that, Madam Chair, I will yield if you have any questions.
Any questions from the board? Here and none, can I get a motion to approve? I'll make a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Here and none, all in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you. The next resolution before you is regarding the Henry County Airport Authority. This resolution would support updates to authorizing legislation for the Henry County Airport Authority. House Bill 784 was approved and passed in 2023, and the resolution before you supports amending that local legislation to narrow the scope of the authority's focus. The intention is to have that primary responsibility be the oversight for the funding mechanism, and this essentially would allow airport expansion, improvements, and maintenance, and make sure that it's consistent with the board's intention for it, kind of helping reconcile some of the administrative conflicts that could arise with the current scope for the authority. And with that, I know that there's a lot that could go into it, but I will yield for any questions.
Are there any questions from the board with regards to any of the red lines in this particular packet? Here and none, can I get a motion to approve? A second. All in favor? Motion carries. Next item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Up next is a resolution for the Henry County Water Authority authorizing legislation for amendment legislation. The resolution before you will support updates to Senate Bill 285, which was passed in 2021, and included updates to the appointments for the authority. This resolution specifically calls for local legislation to amend the appointment process and essentially would just ensure that the appointee serves the pleasure of the sitting commissioner to help make sure that the alignment of the Board of Commissioners' vision and the Water Authority's visions are in sync as we're moving forward with these developments that we've been talking about.
Any questions on this here? Can I get a motion to approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And the last one that we have before you is a resolution regarding legislation for the superior court judge's salary. Currently, House Bill 85 is making its way through the General Assembly. It's going to revise the salary structure and compensation for superior court judges. Essentially, the resolution before you is intending to decouple the superior court judge's salary from the rest of the county positions. We're going through a judicial class of compensation, and we want to make sure that there aren't any issues with that moving forward, making sure that we're keeping parity among county positions and not letting state-level legislation impact our budget constraints. I will note that, just for the record, there are three different identified potential impacts for it. Our state court judges are tied to the superior court judge's salary. The chief judge gets an additional amount, and then the probate courts are also tied to that superior court salary.
Are there any other positions?
Also, the district attorney, there's a lot more.
Yeah, I'm, these were just the ones that I had on my sheet that were judicial, judicial focus. It was a very narrow scope of my chart, so I apologize.
Any questions from the board? Can I get a motion? Okay. Second. All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. That's it for me.
And, and what I would like to say is that these resolutions that we just voted on will go to our local Henry County delegation as well as to the committees at the state legislature to let them know our position. A lot of our positions is, you know, we are a member of the ACCG, the Association of County Commissioners here in Georgia, and we look at legislation that really impacts counties and that can have an adverse impact on funding and those types of things. And so therefore, these will go to the, to the legislature, showing that we approved resolutions supporting any changes or amendments to current legislation that, you know, basically we just want to make sure that they are not implementing laws that would be unfunded mandates for the county. And so most of the counties in Georgia, we get together and we vote on the legislation that we are supporting or not supporting or negotiating. And so we just want to make sure that our position and our voice is heard here in Henry County. Next item on the agenda is the Financial Services Resolution approving FY '25 mid-year
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Commissioners and pillars of the Henry County community. What you have before you is going to be the resolution to amend our fiscal year 2024, 2025 general fund, CGBG fund, the grant fund, and our 2025, General Fund, CDBG Fund, the Grant Fund, and our Special Service Districts and the Stormwater Fund. The Special Service Districts include fire, police, and our unincorporated as well as our Recreation Fund. Before I get to this slide, I wanted to let you know that revenue collections as of December 31st, 2024, which is our mid-year, exceeded our projections, primarily due to higher property tax revenue. Offsetting these increased expenses is the revenue due to, these increases expenses are due to our new state-approved Henry County Police Academy, state-mandated first responder PTSD insurance costs, purchase of fire apparatus, planned debt payments, salary and benefits for additional positions. There are sufficient revenues to cover these additional expenditures. This resolution does provide for a balanced general fund as well as SSDs, the budget to maintain ongoing operations. I want to talk about this before I get to the staff recommendations. So the mid-year budget highlights, these are the fire apparatus numbers that I mentioned, seven and a half million. We made a commitment to purchasing fire equipment each year. We actually have a contract for that. I wanted to set aside a contingency to address any economic uncertainty that may arise. The debt service payment is planned for our central energy plant primarily and other operations, and then the personnel requests amount that you see there. Let's talk about the personnel requests. We received several personnel requests from all of our departments, approximately $11 million in personnel requests, but as you see, we're not going to do everything for everyone at mid-year. Only those items that we mentioned here, where you see animal control, border equalization, clerk of Superior Court, in parks and rec. Parks and rec is big because we have a rec center opening on North Mark Carmel, senior services, the police, I mentioned the academy, planning and zoning, and we have a new department for community resource specialists. This is what the, if you wanted to see what our excess projected revenue are going to be for the year and how we intend to spend the money. So our recommendations, this is my recommendation, is refrain from admitting any additional expenditures past this point. We will revisit all of the requests that were requested at mid-year when we come upon our fiscal year '26 budget. So staff is recommending that this Board approve a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2024, 2025 of general fund budget, CDBG, the grant fund, these special service districts, as well as the stormwater fund. The budget's using this increased expected revenue to cover these increased expected expenditures. I'm prepared to take any questions.
Are there any questions from the Board? Commissioner Wilson? Okay. Commissioner Robinson?
Yes, I have a question. So some of the departments that are requesting, you know, additional staff for their department, you're saying they would have to wait and for it to be revisited for the 2026. County manager, I do want to, and I just want to make it public, that we try to put our coroner's office at the top of the list to kind of look into that, and we'll have additional conversations regarding it, but I just wanted to make that public. Okay? Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Anglin, sorry.
Just wanted to make a comment. As we're addressing the budget, and I wanted to say thank you to David, because I do think it's quite important, I want to make sure the public's aware, that contingency due to the possibility of losing grant funding, because I think that is a real possibility. So I think it's very wise on our part to make sure that we make good till year's end with this contingency that we've got, especially with how some of our federal grants could be impacted and impact our citizens. So thank you for wise guidance there.
Commissioner Lewis?
Yes, I have several questions.
Yes, sir.
Our budget for the year is $259.7 million, correct?
That's correct.
So earlier you stated that, I think in our last meeting you stated that we were tracking to be about $8 million less than that number. Is that correct?
It's made up of two components. We don't intend to spend the, all of our expenditures, and then we have some excess revenue coming in. Yes, sir. So eight million, tracking to spend eight million less, plus eight million in additional revenue.
So that eight million less would put us at 251.
Correct.
And then you're asking to spend 17?
I'm asking to spend 16 of the 17, setting aside at least 25% of that 17. And that's based upon where we see certain departments, even though we still plan on coming in better than planned, there will be certain departments that need to be addressed because they are trending over their budget currently.
Right. So you're asking us to raise that $259.7 million to what?
Yes.
To what number?
I'm asking to raise it to about 217 plus 260, 270? 277?
So, and I know you stated that we were tracking $8 million ahead, but you never outlined where we were saving $8 million.
That is not shown here exactly, but we are tracking in various departments. I could provide that to you if you want to see which departments are trending better.
So I'm disappointed because I was hoping, because I asked at the last meeting to have that, you know, where we were doing better so we could see it. Because I think the Board expects to see where the savings are, because it raises two questions. One question is, you want to say kudos that we're actually tracking ahead, that's great. But the second question is, were we that much off in our projected budget from last year when we were approved of $259.7 million? It's wonderful that we're tracking $8 million less, but where are we saving that money? Were we off in our projections? Or, you know, to me, that is something that we need to know. I think that's something that the public should expect. So I'm a little disappointed that we don't come here and actually say where we're saving the $8 million. It's wonderful that we're tracking ahead with the $17 million projected revenue. However, I think for us to plan adequately going forward, especially if we're coming up on a 2026 budget season, we need to know where we're saving money. And going forward, that's something that we can expect again so that we can have a more accurate projection for our budget in 2026, if that makes sense.
It does make sense, Commissioner. And if you will recall, at the last meeting, when I did present where we were for December, it did indicate where we were trending better by function. Your request was for me to provide that to you by department, and I will certainly do that for you, where you will see that forecast.
That was a request in December, and we're now, we're almost in March.
Well, the December number that was presented was at the past board meeting. We're approximately one month behind when we do our budget presentations.
Understood, but if we ask for something, I don't think it's unreasonable to get it by the next.
Certainly not, Commissioner. Certainly not.
Because what it has us do is to vote, and I think my colleague, Commissioner Wilson, likes to say he doesn't like doing blind voting, and that's sometimes how it feels, is if we're doing blind voting, we're going off of information, but we need concrete, detailed information in front of us to make something, because, you know, the public elects us to. Our first and primary goal.
Is the budget.
Is the budget.
Is the budget.
If we don't do anything else as a Board of Commissioners, is that we have a concrete budget. And so, once again, I just want to express my disappointment that we don't have that information in front of us, coming in at a meeting, asking us to do additional expenditures, and we haven't even explained where we save money. So I just wanted to point that out.
Your disappointment is noted, Commissioner, and I will make certain you have that information in front of you. Thank you.
Commissioner.
And that was my question as well, just what was that total number of the amount to be raised? And like Commissioner Lewis, I would definitely also like an itemized copy of, you know, our spending, just so that we'll know, you know, if there are areas that are not using their projected budgeted amounts, and there are other areas that are going over those, then we know where to place the money. Because I think yearly, our budgets are just a kind of a guide mark, if you will, because I know we won't ever be able to get it perfect, but if we work to get it as close to perfect as we can, then we'll know, you know, what areas we can cut spending or project spending and what other areas we can invest more of the citizens' money. So that was my question. What would the total balance be with the increase? And I think you say around 270. And then again, just the itemization of, you know, those expenditures.
Yes, sir.
I had a question with regards to the, so the contingency is set aside because I think you made a comment with regards to losing possible grant funding?
So it's not just the potential of losing possible grant funding, it's just the statement is really we're entering a period of uncertainty currently. Grant funding is certainly one of those. And also, as we lose grant funding, we also may enter a period of rising costs. And so I want to make certain that we're setting something aside so that when we need to have something available, we will have it available should emergencies occur.
Okay. Because I thought that I saw a number, and this is if, I mean, there's uncertainty and there is risked losing possible grant funding, that I know that I'm very concerned about because it impacts programs that we currently run and operate. When I look at our Meals on Wheels program that feed our seniors, CDBG grant funding that we receive that helps with community development and other programs in our community, any of our senior programs, and even public safety grants. And then we won't even talk about transportation funding. And so because of the uncertainty in DC, it, the state is uncertain, I mean, I think everybody's just kind of uncertain because we don't know what funding that we're going to lose. And I think the total that we had talked about, that if we get no grant funding, we stand to lose anywhere between $22 million and $30 million that we depend on grant funds. And so is that contingency really enough? I guess is my question.
So the $20 million, the $30 million figure that you're mentioning, Commissioner, that encompasses grants that we receive through Department of Transportation, the transportation, the L-MIG monies, and everything else over a period of approximately five years. And so I'm estimating that we may, and grants, I just want to talk about grants itself. Grants make up close to maybe 1% of our overall $259 million budget. So we would be able to cover the programs as you're concerned, to make certain that those are being taken care of and that those services do not stop.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I ask, what will be the game plan if the budget isn't amended?
So the game plan if the budget isn't amended is we just continue to spend. We will have to eventually amend the budget for those departments that do go over. I mean, we started amending the budget at mid-year because that's when we started taking in the majority of our revenues. We knew where we were going to be for the year, but we can operate without amending the budget up until the end of the year, but we definitely have to make certain that our budgets are balanced, where our appropriations do not exceed our revenues. And so we can do it one time a year coming before you, but we prefer to do it at mid-year because that gives the departments that are going to trend over the opportunity to make corrections.
My concern would be if we don't have the information that we need to see how it's tracking, and we amend the budget to go up, I just don't want it to appear that we were giving a green light to continue to spend. So that was my concern.
County manager?
So there are at least two items that the CFO presented that we have no choice. One is the state mandate for the PTSD for the first responders, and then we were recently approved for the police academy. And so to, I don't remember if it was Commissioner, I think it was Commissioner Price's question, if we don't do an amendment of the mid-year budget, we will have to go back and revisit the current adopted budgets and figure out where that funding is going to come from. Obviously, we do have our fund balance, and if the Board authorizes use of the fund balance, that's how we can pay for those two states, one being the state mandate and one being the establishment of the police academy. I would suggest that if the Board is not comfortable moving on this tonight, that you all allow us an opportunity to provide you all with the information that you all need so that you all can vote on this. It is critically important because there are a couple of items that are just kind of hanging, waiting for some direction. If it's the will of the Board that we don't want to do this mid-year adjustment, we will have to go back and revisit the current FY '24, '25 budget and figure out every department where we will cut to be able to include the police academy at a cost of about $217,369, and then the PTSD first responders insurance at about $70,000. And in addition to that, one other project is the Mount Carmel Rec Center. And so this does include the personnel for the opening of that new recreational facility. So that, those are the, in my opinion, the most critical items currently that we have committed to, that we've got to make a decision on it. And I don't know, Mr. Smith, if there's a possibility of us looking at those three items only and then coming back with the additional information, or if the will of the Board is to bring back some additional information in terms of how we're trending and what that looks like.
Well, what my concern would be is we have fire apparatus, EMS, police academy, a lot of this is public safety, and about 58, 60% of our budget is public safety. And so, you know, I just, if our public safety needs it, then we need to fund it. So that's what I got to say. Go ahead, Commissioner Anglin. Commissioner Wilson, go ahead.
I have one question for David. Out of this list, what is the one-time expenditures on your list right here? What's the total one-time expenditures?
The total one-time expenditure?
Yes. So there are no one-time expenditures. You have your contingency, you have your debt service, your fire apparatus. If you'll remember, this Board passed a resolution allowing us to enter into a contract for fire apparatus, where we would be financially ready to support any apparatus that's being purchased. The EMS supplemental pay is a resolution that this Board approved to give additional pay for those that are riding on ambulances. The police academy is something that was recently approved that we have committed to, and I think we are set to start the first class in July. And I may be incorrect in that, so I may have to ask the police chief to confirm that for me. The police step promotions, that is something that we give for the police. We do it two times a year. The Parks and Recreation is the rec center. Those are employees that will be ongoing expenses, so that's not one time. And then the first responders insurance plan, that is for this year, but that will be a reoccurring expense. The other items are the approved mid-year positions, and again, that's your parks and rec, police, EMS, and then the supplemental pay. So there are no one-time expenses within this budget, or within the mid-year recommended adjustments.
Did that answer your question, Commissioner?
It did, but you know what? Going back on Commissioner Lewis's comments earlier. Going back on Commissioner Lewis's comments earlier, you're looking at the two-fifty-nine, what we have currently for our budget, and if you add sixteen million, we know, and all this is going to be reoccurring, now we at two-seventy-five for next year. I mean, that's a, that's where we stand. So that was, that was the purpose of asking that one-time expenditures, so.
Commissioner Angler?
So, uh, the question is, so that all the commissioners can get all the questions answered, if we move this to, again, to the second meeting in March, is there anything that specifically endangered that's on this list if we wait till March at Hurd? Uh, County Manager say July is our commitment on one of the items?
So we're, we're going to have to pay, uh, these items, and the, the goal is just to ensure that the departments do not go, go over budget. So these payments, uh, will be made. Uh, the fire apparatus has already been paid for. The supplemental pay is an ongoing thing that's going to drive the fire depart- EMS department, because fire is now SSD, that's going to drive them over budget, uh, by the end of the, by the end of the year, so.
So you say by the end of the year, but I'm asking about March. If we get it to March, are we okay?
We should be fine. I don't, I don't have any-
Just so everybody can have their questions answered.
Yeah, no, no heartache over March.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and so then can we just table this until, uh, the March?
Yes, I'd like to table it, but I have-
Some additional questions?
Come on, Commissioner, ask, ask the question.
No, I'm not, I'm not, don't rush me. We just can't keep voting for stuff where we don't have the information. I don't know how many times I have to say it, say it behind closed doors, in the public. We have to have the information. Bring us the information, we'll vote. If I don't have information, I'm not going to vote. So that's all I have to say.
So then I'll make the, I guess we need a motion to move this to the second meeting in March to table it.
Okay, Commissioner, got a motion, got a second from Commissioner Robinson, all in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is, um, we're going to, uh, come back and move ahead to, um, I need a motion for us to go into executive session for litigation and personnel matters. Okay, got a motion, all in favor. Okay. We're going to take a break and go into executive session.
Accept the approval of the affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session.
Thank you for...
All in favor? I will be rescinding order number twenty-five dash one. And I will be appointing, we will be moving forward and... Kevin, I need some direction on, after rescinding the order twenty-five dash one, which was the appointment of the county attorney. I'm rescinding that order.
Yes ma'am, this time you have the option to appoint another county attorney.
Okay. I will be appointing Rachel Mack as county attorney. Next item on the agenda is RZ dash twenty-two dash fourteen.
Chairman, Mr. Baker has an item on transportation planning.
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I forget that one? Okay. All right. Transportation plan and resolution accepted. Sam, could you come forward, please?
Good evening, Madam Chair. Good evening, Madam Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, and pillars of the community. Last year, the Atlanta Regional Commission has had some federal transportation funds to distribute ARC solicited transportation projects from the local governments in its jurisdiction. In response to ARC's solicitation, Henry County submitted five transportation projects to the Atlanta Regional Commission's for federal funds. They were State Route forty-two widening, Oak Grove Road widening, Eagles Landing Parkway, Hudson Bridge Road, East Lake Parkway road resurfacing, Jonesboro Road resurfacing, and Camp Creek Greenway Trail Engineering and Design. While we did not get everything that we asked for, I am still pleased to report to you that we have been granted a total of six point two five million dollars by the Atlanta Regional Commission to fund three transportation projects. They are State Route forty-two widening from Bill Gardner Parkway to State Route one fifty-five, a scoping study, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars. Jonesboro Road resurfacing from I seventy-five to Rosebud Lane, four million dollars to resurface the road, and Camp Creek Greenway Preliminary Engineering, one point five million dollars. These federal funds require twenty percent local match, and the local matching funds are, will be coming from SLOST six referendum that Henry County voters passed last November. Staff suggests that you accept the federal funds from the Atlanta Regional Commission. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board?
Forty-two widening, and I'm gonna go from Key Mill to Bill Gardner Parkway. Did the state put some money into that last year for scoping?
We requested money. As of now, we only have received seven hundred fifty thousand dollars.
But that's coming from ARC, right?
ARC.
But I thought the state was gonna put some money in that for scoping as well. So we didn't get anything from the state? Last, it'd been the last session?
No, we did not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. If there are no other questions, can I get a motion to approve? You have a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Thank you so much, Sam.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Kenta. RZ dash twenty-two dash fourteen, public hearing.
All right. Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Board members, and pillars of the community. The item before use for property located south of Highway eighty-one east and west of Keys Ferry Road, property is two hundred and thirty-nine point four plus or minus acres, currently zoned RA residential agricultural. The subject property has a future land use map designation of village and low-density residential, and the rezoning request before use to rezone the subject property from RA to R1 for the purpose of a residential subdivision. This is the original site plan that was submitted by the applicant. And here is the updated, latest and greatest site plan. The new site plan features fewer lots, enhanced circulation, and gated entrances. Here are some elevations that were submitted by the applicant. Some department comments that we took in and reviewed as part of staff's evaluation. At the time of the application's dismissal, property had a rule residential future land use map designation which did not support the request. At that time, staff did recommend, as well as zoning advisory board, recommend denial of that applicant's request. However, with this new comp plan and future land use map update, property has a new designation of that village and at low-density suburban, which would support the request to R1 zoning district for that site plan that indicates the one-acre lots. Again, site plan, one-acre lots, enhanced circulation, gated entrances. And with that all being said, staff does recommend approval of the applicant's request with the following conditions. I would like to add that staff is adding a new, rather recommending a new condition to this request and for future upcoming residential requests. This condition is in response to some recent events with the purpose of providing a clear timeline related to building permits. This condition, with a future policy change, will require building permits dismissal to be accepted only after approval of the final plat. Thank you. I'll be happy to take any questions you might have.
We'll hold questions until the end. This is a public hearing, so persons wishing to come and speak in favor of the request, including the applicant, will have a total of ten minutes to address the board.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Steve Moore, Moore Bass Consulting, thirteen fifty, Keys Ferry Court, McDonough, Georgia, here tonight representing John Baudavesso in this proposed rezoning request. So I'm gonna try not to repeat too much of what Kenta said. He always does a good job of laying the groundwork. But this is the property just in a contextual manner to show its location relative to eighty-one highway and Keys Ferry Road. The future land use map again was, as part of the twenty-twenty-three amendment, did redesignate this property as low-density suburban. As you can see, it's consistent with what we have to the east and south of this tract. Our request is to rezone from RA to R1 for a hundred and fifty-nine lots. These lots will be one acre minimum, a hundred and fifty feet wide. And our overall, we're in the watershed, the limited development area of the Watership Protection District, which has a certain requirements on septic tank lots to be a minimum of one acre, so we do comply with that. And they also have a one point seven five units per acre. And, uh, they also have a one-point-seven-five units per acre max density. Uh, and what we're proposing with this application is approximately point eight units per acre. So this, this will be, uh, an owner-occupied gated, uh, high-end residential community. There are two entrances proposed, one that will go to State Route eighty-one, uh, to the, on the left side of that map, with a second entrance to Keys Ferry Road, uh, that would align with, um, McLean Drive. Uh, we did, uh, consult with Henry County Fire Department with regards to the locations of these accesses, because they have a separation requirement. Uh, they did grant a variance based on the shape of the property, and by making some internal connections, uh, they were able to, to confirm that this, with that variance, would meet their driveway separation requirements. So, kind of unique to this project, different than what you guys see, a lot of time is the size of these lots. Uh, not a lot of rezonings asking for one-acre lots. Um, and I just wanted to draw attention to, just, this will be not your typical masqueraded track home community. Um, with a septic tank community with lots this size, these will be, the only clearing that would occur would be what's associated with the roads, uh, the water lines, any detention ponds, and then the, the building sites. And so this, uh, exhibit is just intended to kind of communicate the probable area that would be cleared as home construction starts to show that there is roughly two-hundred-and-sixty-foot separation that would be intended to remain natural. Um, you know, obviously, if a homeowner wanted to clear more, they would have the opportunity, but as the developer and as the builder goes in, they're only gonna clear pretty much what they would need to clear. And the site is relatively wooded, uh, and that would remain in all of those areas with exception of the infrastructure locations and then these house sites, uh, pad sites. So we are proposing, uh, close to the north end of the property, an amenity center. Uh, that amenity area would have, uh, is roughly three acres in size. Would have a playground, two pickleball courts, uh, open air pavilion with a community fire pit, uh, and then would also house the, the USPS mail kiosk. And so these are a little bit different, uh, elevations are a little bit more refined detail of the elevations that Kenta presented earlier. Uh, this is intended to be a mixture of ranch and two-story products. These will be side entry garages, given the sizes of the lots. And, uh, we expect these homes to, you know, sell in the, uh, high six hundreds to seven hundreds by the time this subdivision goes on the ground. There, there is no builder picked, again, you know, the typical, uh, presentations includes, uh, some national builder or somebody like that already has their building products. This is the owner who wants to rezone this property, to have the opportunity to sell it to one or more, uh, builders, it may be some custom builders, it may be one big national builder. They don't have that person selected, so he's gone and done his own independent research to try to develop the product type that he envisions being on this property, and that's what these are intended to represent. But really intended to be very, you know, a, a very broad variety of architectural styles, uh, that would be throughout this community. So with that, um, I'm thankful to receive staff's recommendation of approval. We've read through the conditions, don't have any issue with those. And when the time is appropriate, I'm happy to come back up here and answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephanie, will you restart, or is there anyone else who wants to speak in favor? Um, if you would reset the clock. Those are wishing to speak in opposition of the request likewise have ten minutes collectively. Is there anyone that wants to come and speak in opposition of this development? Please come forward. Um, I, uh, before I turn it over to Commissioner Wilson, this is his district, I, I did have a question regarding, um, if, if you would go back to the conditions.
Uh, any conditions specifically?
Um. I guess what I'm, I'm trying to make sure of, um, i- is with regards to, um, county manager, is there, um, additional conditions that we're putting on, um, developments with regards to our current, um, impact fee?
So I can help answer that question a little bit, uh, before, before county manager jumps in. Um, this condition is to help, um, address some of those concerns. Um, this condition, uh, in short, requires building permits to follow once a final plat has been issued for the property, for the development. Um, and I think this condition was, was helped crafted by maybe the county attorney, or an attorney.
So, yes, ma'am, um, good evening. Uh, this was crafted by the, the attorneys, and, uh, currently, right now, we allow for LDPs, land deserving permits, and building, uh, permits to be submitted simultaneously. Now you have to wait until you get a final plat before you can submit that, uh, for their building permits.
Okay, thank you, that was my only question. Commissioner Wilson, this is in your district.
So if I could get Mr. Steve Moore back up, I got a couple of questions for him. So you got a buffer right here of the entrance coming off of Keys Ferry Road. Why is that buffer? Because that entrance, when you come in, you can see the development. So how, how big of a buffer do you have coming off Keys Ferry?
We designated it ninety feet.
Ninety feet?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Uh, I don't know if you mentioned it, but I think the conversation was the minimum two thousand square feet on a ranch?
That's, that's, I mean, again, without having a builder selected, we felt like that was a reasonable approach to do a two-thousand-square-foot minimum on the ranch and twenty-two-hundred-square-foot on the two stories. Um, but, you know, market and price will largely dictate that once they have a builder in place.
I think it's gonna be hard to build a seven-hundred-thousand-dollar home on a two, with a two-thousand-square-foot ranch.
Right, and yes.
I mean, we could, we could bump that up, but I think it to, to fit that price point, you can put minimum, but it's probably gonna take a twenty-four, twenty-six-hundred-square-foot ranch to even get close to that price point.
Yes, sir. Yeah, and again, just not knowing that end user builder, but I understand from the marketability standpoint to tie to that price point. Um, but I didn't see it, there wasn't any minimums included in the staff report recommendations, but happy to talk through that now and add that as a condition, if that's what you'd like.
So, can we come back and add it later? When they do the, when they do the architectural reviews, can we look at what the price point is for these type homes and add it in there later? Would you like to add it tonight?
Uh, staff would like to have it tonight.
So, two thousand minimum, I, I don't, I would rather see it go to probably twenty-four-hundred. And you're still probably not gonna be able to build a home for, for, you know, that price point of seven, like, seven-hundred-thousand, twenty-four-hundred. But that kind of gives you, and then you'd have to bump the two stories up to probably twenty-eight, three, is that correct?
Or twenty-six, yeah, something in that ballpark.
So we're in there, so if we could make that a note, because i- it's just gonna be hard to meet a price point with that, with that low square footage. Another thing to, again, I'd like to add in them conditions with no vinyl soffits. Uh, I think, uh, with, uh, ULDC, we have no vinyl siding or no other, but you do allow vinyl soffits, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so on this, on these, uh, homes, I'd like to put a condition with no vinyl soffits, no vinyl products, period. Then we'll go to the water tables, of course, stucco's not allowed. So the water tables for these, we'll make sure we have all of them would include either brick or stone, or it could be a combination both. And that's all I have, this is very well put together, and so I want to thank the staff for working with Mr. Moore, getting out these conditions, but, so I think the community would be happy with this.
Yes, sir.
Alright.
Okay, I'm, I'm sorry, what was the square footage showing the different sizes?
Uh, for the ranch, I have two thousand four hundred square feet for two-story, two thousand six hundred, and those are minimums.
Okay, thank you.
So with all that being said, those conditions, Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
I got a motion on the floor, uh, from Commissioner Wilson. Is there a second? Oh, I'm sorry, are there any additional questions?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead, Commissioner.
So just two questions I have. As far as the entrance and exit, the subdivision looks like it's pretty lengthy. Is there no concern for an exit further back in the subdivision? Both of them are up front, one of them on the major highway, um, for access for fire PD?
That has been a challenge to, just based on the shape of the property and the inability to control any of the adjacent properties. Now, what we have done is there is a section where the amenity center is that we've preserved at least the opportunity to have an easement there in the event that that community, that property right there ends up developing, that staff would at least have the ability to make them provide a connection there that would give another connection point. And I would venture a guess that if any of those properties further south ever developed, staff could also make that, the only challenge with that is that we have a gated condition, so it would be an emergency access only, um, with, unless it was made as another phase of this development. That is a problem, and like I said, we had to go through that variance process with the fire department to try to get that issue resolved, and they felt satisfied with that outcome.
Only concern with that easement right there is, I mean, it's right on a ditch.
It is on the uphill side of the ditch, yes, it sure is.
Second question has to do, and you have helped do this in District Three, um, concerning the tree study that's been requested at the request of a commissioner. Um, did y'all happen to do one in this area for tree study with the trees and where the roads are going?
No, sir, uh, no official study has been done. Um, only thing I could speak on, with regards to trees, is the fact that the clearing would be limited to the areas needed for roads and, and actual house construction, no other trees beyond that would be done. But by the time this develops, the new ULDC, I'm supposing would be adopted, and I understand that there's gonna be some provisions for tree protection in there, and...
Will that take place, Kenta?
Yes.
In the new ULDC, okay. Thank you, Steve, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else have any question? Okay, so we got a motion on the floor from Commissioner Wilson, is there a second? Got a motion and a second. If there are no further discussion, all in favor. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is... Okay, uh, MC, MDP twenty-four dash two. Kenta?
Uh, good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Board Members, and pillars of the community. Uh, the item before you is for property located south of the intersection of Loop Road and Westridge Parkway. Property is twelve-point-eight-one-seven plus or minus acres, and is currently zoned PD planned development with an office institutional pod designation. Uh, the request before you is to modify the Westridge planned development to change this pod from its O and I designation to an RM multifamily residential pod for the purpose of a condominium development. Uh, subject property has that future land use map designation of high-density mixed-use, supporting a density of between eight and twenty dwelling units per acre net. Uh, quick zoning history, subject property as part of a larger request was rezoned with that Westridge planned development with those various pod designations. As part of the original conditions, an internal design review committee would approve building elevations and signage. There's, of course, other, um, other conditions as part of that nineteen-ninety-nine rezoning, and that is all in your exhibit books. Uh, this is the site plan of the subject property. Uh, elevations to follow after this one. This site plan shows a gated and attached condominium development. Each condo will be rear entry, allowing for each unit to front on a public green space. Uh, these lots that are backing up to the existing Westridge subdivisions are to be two-story, uh, with the internal units to be three-story. And again, here are those elevations, and then showing, uh, those, that frontage onto that public green. Some department comments that we received as part of our evaluation and review. Uh, applicant is requesting to amend and modify that Westridge PD, once again, for that planned unit development uh, to allow an office, I'm sorry, uh, multifamily residential pod here on this property. Uh, the site plan indicates a hundred and thirty-two fee simple condominium units, again, to be gated, uh, net density of ten-point-seven dwelling units per net acre. The site has been undeveloped since nineteen-ninety-nine, um, despite its o- office pod designation. The request with this site plan shows a buffer between the existing commercial and single-family pod, uh, rather, single-family subdivisions to the west. Uh, it also incorporates those perimeter buffers, uh, with those units, again, funding that co- uh, community green space, which is something that we are, um, kind of just now seeing as some of our, uh, recent rezoning submittals. Again, those elevations. Uh, as a condominium development, it would need to adhere to the multifamily standards under Section four oh four oh five. Uh, with all of that being said, staff does recommend approval of the applicant's request to modify the Westridge PD to change that pod designation from office institutional to multifamily residence, um, along with those original nineteen-ninety-nine zoning conditions. Uh, as noted earlier, staff is implementing and, and recommending we add that condition regarding the building permit timeline. And with that, uh, that concludes my presentation, thank you, and I'll be happy to take any questions you might have.
Okay, so, okay, we'll hold questions. Um, this is a public hearing. Um, anyone wishing to come to speak in favor of it, including applicant? Please come forward, uh, ten minutes.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Steve Moore, Moore Bass Consulting, thirteen fifty, Keys Ferry Court, McDonough, Georgia, here tonight representing JRC Ferris, thank you, Kenta. Um, so, again, uh, property, uh, consists of, uh, twelve-point-eight acres of land, uh, shown here on the aerial photo. Um, our request is to modify the PD master plan for Westridge, uh, to redesignate that tract from O and I to RM. Um, this piece of property has sat vacant for roughly twenty-five years. Um, it is, just, there's just no, been no demand for office space in this area, um, or any additional commercial other than what's on the highway, so we felt like this was an appropriate use, uh, to fit, uh, a need of additional housing, um, in the area. This is proposed as a hundred and thirty-two, and I just want to clarify, these are definitely fee simple condominiums, owner-occupied condominiums, this is not apartments, although it has an appearance when you look at it on a map. Um, these are ownership, uh, structures. So as the building is built, individuals will purchase through a plat their four walls that separates their unit from the next-door neighbor. Everything underneath that, uh, and around that building would be common open space owned by the association, the Property Owners Association. So the design concept that we use for this, as Kenta alluded to, is all rear-accessed, but they face a common courtyard area, and this is a, a popular trend that you see on the north side of Atlanta and a lot of new, uh, mixed-use and, and residential developments. And I understand, even talking with Kamal, that the, I think, new ULDC will incorporate some of these courtyard, uh, design styles as, uh, as a suggested or appropriate, uh, technique for laying these types of communities out. So we have tried to buffer... So we have tried to buffer the surrounding areas. There's a, on the north side of the site is some of the Westridge development. They already have a large open space strip that separates their property from this with the anticipation that this was going to be commercial. That was contemplated in the original master plan. We've further added a 30-foot buffer along that property line as well as on the other two, the other corners there, especially adjacent to the Publix Shopping Center. The gated entry, the existing entrance that serves the little out parcel right there, that will serve as the primary access into this project. The gates obviously would be past the entrance into that office there. And then we have proposed a second access to Westridge Parkway, which is intended to be an emergency access, a gated emergency access only. But the primary access being at the curb cut on Westridge Parkway at the existing location. We felt like this development style, the unit type, product type offered some variety to the area predominantly. It's all, you know, single-family residential and varying lot sizes in the Westridge community. We felt like this offered just an additional option for, you know, empty nesters or young professionals who wanted to not necessarily have to maintain a yard. Again, all of the exterior of these units, even though they're fee simple, exterior paint, exterior maintenance, lawn maintenance, everything would be owned or operated and performed by the Property Owners Association. So the amenities, we are paid a lot of attention to trying to provide enough amenities in this area to support the development. We have two pickleball courts proposed at one section of the, of the development with a dog park and then a resort-style pool cabana with a large lawn area. Those amenities are, as Kenta alluded to earlier, are required by the new ULDC multifamily standards. In addition, there is a parking requirement of four, one space for every four units. I think we exceed that. I think the, we have, I think, 50 or something, parking spaces roughly is about 20 more than, I think, what the code required, just to make sure that we have, you know, enough guest parking to where people weren't in the roads. But again, these roads that you see here is the alleyway. That's the rear access into these units. And they've been designed at a width suitable for fire apparatus to make sure that we don't have any issues there. So these are the two-story units, so the development is kind of comprised of 34 units that are three-story, four-bedroom units with two-car garages. This is the two-story unit with their two-bedroom, one-car garages, and there's only 20 of these units. The balance of them being the larger three-story units. And so this is an image of those. So again, there's 34 three-story, four-bedroom units, and there's 78 three-story, three-bedroom units. All of the three-story have a two-car garage. But again, you can see that's the front facing the courtyard area and then the, kind of the utility side of the, of the houses on the alley side where you'll have the garages. But there'll still be landscape strips and vegetation back there as well. And then there is a video hopefully we'll play. There you go. Thanks. So these will be price points starting in the mid 300s. I think the square footage was the minimum on the smallest unit was 1,200, and they'll go up to 1,600 to 1,800 square feet on the larger units. But again, this offers a variety of different product types. Mixed material on the architectural style. We've tried to work with some of the more recent comments that we've received in zonings about something different, architecturally different and unique, so we're not seeing the same stuff. So... That is the presentation, and I understand this is a public hearing, so I will sit down and be ready to answer any questions when the time comes. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wishing to come speak in favor of this project? Stephanie, if you would reset the clock. Is there anyone wishing to come and speak in opposition of this development? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening, Board. Angie Collins, Crystal Lake Golf and Country Club Community. I am concerned with just the magnitude of homes that are proposed for this particular development. I just could not wrap my mind around how 130-plus homes were going to comfortably fit into 12.8 acres. When I think about purchasing a home in the community where that home, where this development is proposed, you think about somebody purchasing a home that's going to be their lifetime home. And even though it has, you know, stairs, if you're in your 50s plus, you don't want to climb stairs up and down. So one concern was how much square footage are we actually getting in the homes? And then I was also concerned that if a development like this, could it potentially be an area where people might see this as somewhere where people can come and rent? And so you have a lot of renters that could potentially come in and out of that home, which kind of affects the community because it's a very nice community, it's a very nice neighborhood, so I was concerned about that. And just the aesthetics, I mean, that looks very cookie cutter. It looks like a child drew that, and they all look very similar. Another thing that, as he was pointing out, some of the amenities with that pickleball court, I don't know if you all have considered this, but when you have a pickleball court and people are really active on that and you live close by, that's a lot of noise. So I've seen other studies where people who live in communities where pickleball courts were developed, they are great. I'm not saying they're not, but if they're too close to your home, it's a constant noise. So that's something to consider as well. So what I question is, why are there so many on such a small amount of land? And what perhaps could be done to adjust that? Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to come speak in opposition? Please come forward, state your name and address.
Good evening. I am Tisa Bright. I live at 1633 Celestial Court in McDonough. The subdivision is the Retreat, which is a 55-plus community. Someone else was supposed to speak tonight, but they had to leave. I agree with the young lady before me. 130 units is a lot, and we only have one entrance minus the emergency entrance. That's a lot of traffic on that road. There's already five subdivisions from Highway 20 to the end of West Ridge, the area that we're talking about. So 130 additional cars, because more than likely each unit will have at least one vehicle. That's a bit hit on traffic. There's also only one grocery store from Highway 20 and 75 all the way to Hampton. Again, that's putting stress on that area. Could that space be better utilized as a green space, walking trails, a park for that area, so we won't have to travel to Mount Carmel or another park? I just ask you to please think about this. Think about your residents that are already in that area. Come talk to us to see what, what's on our mind, what we really would like to see in that community. Thank you.
Hello, I am Tequila Tooks, and my family and I reside at 118 Ivy Trace, the Ivies at West Ridge. And my concern is when we purchased our home in 2016, it is where we chose to raise our 70-year-old long-term. When I think about the development that is being proposed here for residential purposes, I'm concerned that because of the square footage of these properties, the magnitude of the residences that will be occupying them, that it would attract people who are likely to come in and out, won't be there for long-term purposes. I'm also concerned about the flow of traffic that we will, because currently Loop Road flows into the five subdivisions that are in the Ivies. And if you're not able to exit out of Loop Road, you end up coming back into our neighborhoods. And I'm concerned that traffic would flow back into our neighborhoods and on our streets. So I would ask that you would reconsider using this property for some other use. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Hi, my name's Hailing Mentor, and I live in the West Ridge subdivision. My backyard will be right behind where those apartments are going. We are a 55-plus community, and we went there because we wanted to live our lives in a calm and serene place. You put a three-story building, it's going to be looking out over our homes. We won't have any privacy. You're going to have pickleball courts. You hear all the, in Marietta, how they're complaining because of the sound of the pickleball courts. That, you know, we, we may go to bed at 8:00 or 9:00 o'clock, and they're out there playing pickleball. It's going to be a very, very difficult time for us in our final homes to enjoy our life, not only as they said before, before the traffic, the more congestion we have. I've only been here for a year, a little over a year, and I love that community and everybody in there. We all look out for each other. You're not going to have that. You're going to have kids that are coming in, jumping around, playing in our yards if they're going over that. It's just not going to be a very good place for us to continue to live our lives, and I think that needs to be taken into consideration instead of if the condos, the people can rent them out after the owner has bought it. We don't need the rentals in that area. Thank you for your time.
I'm Judy Sewell. I live in the West Ridge community, and my backyard is going to be looking at this. We're all in our 70s and 80s and 60s, and we just don't need all this upheaval in our community of the building of it, of the grading of it, of the hammering. All that construction is just going to be unbearable because it's going to be right there at us, so close. So I ask, and then the traffic, there's a pothole up there at the red light now that they can't keep filled. You have to go around it. What's that going to be like with all these other 130 homes, and they all have two cars? So I wish you would just reconsider this for the sake of our community. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Okay, this concludes our public hearing. Are there any questions from the board? Okay.
These units will be sprinkled?
If the, if Mr. Moore would come back up, please, and answer that. Because I guess sprinkled or firewall?
My understanding is that based on the current ULDC, condominiums fall under a commercial building code, and that commercial building code would then require sprinkled protected buildings, also ADA accessibility, that type of stuff. So I think that that is where those items would be addressed, and obviously we would have to comply with that if they want to get a building permit, so.
Okay, I just seen on one of the presentation, they consider them townhomes. That's the reason I asked.
Yes, definitely, they're not, they architecturally look like townhomes, but they are fee simple condominiums. The only difference is they don't have a front yard and a backyard that the people would own. Everything under the, all the grounds would be common area. They would only own inside the four walls.
So they're going to be sprinkled like a multifamily?
Or similar to a townhome, because the architectural style will be very similar, constructability, so yes, either, either one of those two.
There's different types of sprinkler systems.
Right.
There's 13, 13O, or 13D.
It'll meet fire code.
Yeah, whatever your ordinance requires, it will meet. And again, I think because they're condominiums, they fall under a different building code. They have to follow under a commercial building code as of right now, which I think immediately requires sprinklers, sprinklers.
Okay, thank you.
So then would it be safe to say, or put a condition just to make sure?
If it's required by the fire department and fire life safety code, then it's going to be required when it comes time for building permits.
I guess the point that...
Yeah, I'm not sure how they classify them, to be honest with you.
Right, because...
He said commercial, they'd be a commercial, like, you know...
Yeah, because there are different types of sprinkler systems, and so...
Yeah.
If it's commercial, normally the sprinkler system is a little bit more than just the regular sprinkler system.
Yes, ma'am. And, and we're hoping that the new ULDC, when it gets adopted, will make, will at least address the condominium aspect and maybe not, it still requires sprinkled protective, but maybe not to that commercial standard like, because right now it's the only category that they fit under. But we would be fine with taking a condition that requires, you know, fire protection to meet the current townhome standards, if that's appropriate. I mean, aren't your townhomes right now are required to be sprinkled? Maybe not? But...
We can add it as a condition.
Yeah, we'd be fine adding the condition of a residential-grade sprinkler system in the units. You okay with that?
Well, not if it's, if you're saying that you have to follow commercial, I don't want to downgrade it to residential.
Yes, ma'am.
We'll, we'll speak with the fire department and get clarification as far as what...
Yeah, but when we leave here tonight...
Sure.
You know...
And the only reason that I mentioned the, the residential grades, because at least my understanding was that as the ULDC is being read adopted, that there might be some provisions for a different category of condos so that they don't just qualify as commercial. That's the only reason I mentioned that. We're not trying to have anything substandard. I just wanted to make sure it's relevant to the new code.
Yeah, they would fall in the NAPA life safety code, which would be NAPA 13, in which it identifies different levels of sprinklers. So you got like residential sprinkled, they just do, just in the heated area. Now, commercial sprinkling apartment complexes, they do chases, garages, breezeways, attic, everything.
So, yeah, so we're just going to add a condition that, that the units be sprinkled. Because as of right now, what we have is if it's six units or less, there's no sprinkler system required, but they have to meet firewall rated between each unit, okay? But if it's the, the, your choice to have sprinkler system, then we can have that.
Good. And is this a gated community?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
And they are for sale properties?
Yes.
Is, is there a, is this going to be a HLA community?
Yes, ma'am.
So is there going to be a limitation put on rentals?
Yes, ma'am.
10% per the condition?
5%?
Yeah, no, I'll wait till...
All right, Commissioner Robinson, I'm sorry. Okay, all right. Okay, Commissioner Lewis, go ahead.
Yes, and the, the reason, the reason I wanted, or I know you all offer 10%, we usually do 5%, and I want to drop to 5%. One of the things about this development, and I'll go back, because I know residents had a lot of concerns. So this is, this is basically the third iter- So this is, this is basically the third iteration of this development. So when this was originally proposed, it was all rentals. It was about 190 units, uh, close to 200 units. Um, the elevations looked horrible. I'm just going to be honest, they, they were horrible. Um, so during this year and a half that we've talked about this, we've gotten it down to some elevations. And I know somebody, I don't know, Ms. Colsey said her cookie cutter. These are literally the same types of units that are being built in the northern areas of the county. I know some of the areas that you, you actually like to frequent. Um, changed the elevations. The really beneficial parts of this community and why I actually like this development is a lot of the businesses right across the road in West Ridge, they, they have been asking for corporate-style, um, units, uh, which is why the, the rental piece will actually apply to them. And they actually are trying to have programs for the people that work across in West Ridge. And one thing that the developer did that I was very appreciative of, they stated that they were actually, they actually looked into programs that would help our teachers, our fire workers, our public safety workers, and even some of our county employees be able to have access to these units before the general public does. So, once they were able to come to the table to meet these type of conditions, this is something that, that is very important to me. It's been important to me, um, in the two years I've been commissioner. I know it's important to the chair, trying to find affordable housing and trying to find housing that meets the needs of our residents. Um, any other area, can, we, we just had a, a neighborhood that go into 600, 700,000 dollar houses. That's, that's not attainable for, for most people these days. So these, these units are starting at 300s, but there are actually some that would be on the lower side of that, um, so that they, uh, along with the programs that we are doing with the government, they will be able to, um, tap into our local market. So, so with that being said, and I just wanted to explain to the public, you know, the, these are, these are things that weigh heavily on the decision. When we have businesses that, you know, are going to invest in these particular units and then we also have, um, some of our county employees who will be able to, to, to buy these units, uh, with some of the special programs. So, um, with that being the case, that, that is why I'm in support. And even to the point, I know you're talking about the, the three, three-level units. That's why the three-level units were moved into the interior and not on the exterior. That's on the exterior of this development, you have the two-level units, so it doesn't, so they won't look out, even though the, the buffer is large enough that you probably won't see them anyway. But the three-level units were moved into the interior. So, a lot of work went into this. Like I said, I know, I know we're, we're in a time when, you know, a lot of people who, who currently live here, you know, they don't want anybody else to move here. We, I mean, it's, it's actually, it's not realistic at this point. Um, what we want to do is try to control the things that are built and have them be, you know, advantageous for our community, you know, where we have good community partnerships, uh, with the businesses to make sure that we have, you know, affordable or more affordable living, uh, for the people that work here. So, um...
I got, I got, I got a couple of questions. Uh, can you, can you go back to the, um...
Site plan, conditions?
Did you have another one before that one? Maybe? Are these all pictures that you have, or is this in, in this here?
Uh, Steve in his presentation had some.
Okay, I guess I'm trying to see where the, the, where the 50, where the, the residents live. I'm trying to, you have something that show me where the other, the other people that live around?
They're to the north.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so Chair, the, the, you see where the pickleball courts are?
Mm-hmm.
Um, that directly adjacent to the pickleball courts is, like, the amenity is, is the community. Everything on that north kind of side of that, that green buffer line. And then immediately across that from the pickleball courts is the amenity center for that, for that community right there, for the 55 and older community. So those lots, you see where the houses are smaller, closer together, rather? Um, that's the community that I, that they were talking about.
Okay, then, so how, how, how much is this buffer that buffers this community to that community? And then I guess my, my second question is, if they are, will they be able to see, um, the rooftops of these?
So the, um, that buffer, as per condition 20-foot, um, as per our code, uh, the lots, the units that back up to these subdivisions, to that northwest and southwest, those would be two-story as per our conditions.
And the existing buffer that was platted, again, was contemplated as this being commercial, so it obviously had a big buffer adjacent to the residential, is about 50 feet. So there's roughly 70 feet of buffer that would be there. Plus, then you would have the driveways and then the two-story units. So, it would be very well screened.
And so, with regards to the pickleball, I mean, is that going to cause noise disturbance to that community?
We picked that location, again, just based on the fact that it was adjacent to a detention pond on one side. It was adjacent to their existing, uh, amenity center for that community. It just, we felt like it was in like-kind with the use across, you know, next door. Um, but I'm certain that, I mean, they don't want it to be a distraction, not only to the adjacent neighbors, but to their residents as well. So whether it's a time limit that they put on there, that the thing shuts down at a certain time, they certainly don't want it to be, uh, an annoyance for their residents. But it is a very popular sport. And we can certainly look at, I, I don't think there was a specific site plan condition on this that said it has to be built exactly like this and maybe we could find another location for the pickleball. Or maybe, it, I think the pickleball is listed as a required amenity. Um, and so, you know, if it is, if that's where the condition lies, we can, if we had the option of at least potentially looking at the potential to relocate the thing, that would be something we could do as part of the engineering process.
Certainly.
So is there an area for playground?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, the playground is, um, in the, the big green kind of oblong section there by the pool and the, uh, cabana, in the middle of these units. And then there's a dog park next to the pickleball courts.
So if it stays on the way that it is, someone could possibly come and build a office building there? So it's an office building or...
It is office institutional now, but it's been undeveloped since 1999.
Okay.
But they could build an office building.
But I guess my question is, and the way it's owned now, they can just come put a big office building there?
Okay.
Okay. That's just all I have. Anybody else have any questions? Okay, all right.
Uh, with, with that being said, I make, uh, I'd like to move to approve.
Got a motion to approve? Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. No further discussion?
I do have quick clarification. Just to be sure, um, does your recommendation include sprinkler system and 5% rental cap?
Correct.
Got it.
No, ma'am. Public comment is over. Okay, got a motion and a second. If there are no further discussion, all in favor. Any opposed? And abstained? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, board members and pillars of the community. Before you this evening is the request for properties located at 297 and 309 Peach Drive and is 10.7 plus or minus acres. The request is to rezonate subject property from RA Residential Agricultural to R5 Single Family Residence for the purpose of detached, single-family cluster home development. The subject property is outlined in green and is currently zoned RA Residential Agricultural with a future land use designation of urban residential, which supports a density between four and 12 dwelling units per acre net. The applicant provided an original site plan on the screen before you, which was a proposal for 66 townhomes with a density of 11.2 dwelling units per acre net. They've since turned in a revised site plan that proposes 45 single-family cluster homes with a net density of 8.3 dwelling units per acre net. Please see the elevations before you. The applicant is requesting to rezonate 10.7 point plus or minus acres from RA to R5 for a 45-lot, single-family cluster home development with a density of 8.3 dwelling units per acre. The subject property has a future land use designation of urban residential, which would support the development between four to 12 dwelling units per acre. We have received comments from each department, which you can see above. Again, you, um, will see that there's 10 plus, excuse me, 10.7 acres for this property and they are proposing 45 lots. And they will have to meet all of the horizontal multifamily standards there and provided in the ULDC. Staff does recommend approval with conditions as you can see above. And we did make an additional comment, um, which Kent had mentioned in previous cases. And I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
We'll hold off. This is a public hearing. Uh, anyone wishing to speak in favor, please come forward. Call on the applicant.
Evening again. Steve Moore, Moore Gas Consulting, 1350 Keith Ferry Court, McDonough, Georgia, here tonight, uh, representing AA Peach Development. In this proposed zoning request, so, uh, little aerial map, just to give you some context of where this property is located. The Orchard Park Development, immediately south. Uh, that is a septic tank development, um, and then Winslow at Eagles Landing, uh, to the, uh, to the east, um, and then Flipping Road Elementary to the north. So you can see this orange area is what is designated as high-density suburban, um, and, uh, with the brown being the, uh, urban residential, which is, uh, our proposed, or our current land use designation, supporting between four and 12 units per acre. The site, uh, currently contains a couple of, uh, two homes and some outbuildings. Uh, those areas would be, uh, removed as part of the development. And then there's a, a good stand of trees along Peach Drive that is intended to remain, as well as those that are along the perimeter of the site that will be preserved as buffers, uh, and open space as part of the development. So this was the original application that we filed. Uh, after getting some feedback from staff and some concerns, uh, we, uh, went back to the drawing board and prepared the current plan, which you see, which offered a significant reduction in the overall number of units and a different development approach. Um, the previous application was for 66 townhome units. We're now proposing 45 cluster homes. Um, and, uh, that would be authorized under, uh, if approved, under an R5 zoning designation, which would support, uh, and proposes about 8.3 units per acre, oh, uh, as a net density, about 40 units to the acre gross density. Um, this will be a very strong HOA community, um, as you will need in one of these types of developments. All the yard maintenance would be taken care of by the HOA exterior maintenance of the, of the units, uh, as well as maintenance and operations of the amenity center. Um, but this, uh, definitely is an owner-occupied community, again, not a rental community. Um, and I understand there'll be some, some recommendations on a rental cap, which is going to be okay. Uh, two large, two entrances proposed, uh, with a large buffer onto Peach Drive. These are some images showing those entrances. And again, the, the vegetation that is intended to remain, uh, along the frontage in those buffer areas. So there is, uh, the site plan showed, uh, go back to the site plan real quick. Um, in the center of the site, uh, an amenity center that has, uh, a, uh, open-air pavilion, playground, community fire pit, and a dog park. So that area is shown there and then detailed on this rendering right here. So that would be the, uh, the playground, the community fire pit, uh, pavilion area, and then the fenced dog park. So, again, trying to come up, I'm, I'm learning every time I come in front of you guys about what I hear about architectural styles and development styles. And we're trying to come up with new and unique products. And I'm trying to, you know, bring the development community along with what you guys are looking for. And I hope we've met the mark here with the style that, that has been chosen for this development. But it is a, kind of a craftsman-style, uh, home, but it, you know, designed to fit these types of lots. Um, these will have, uh, a feature of master-owned main ranch-level homes, um, that would range from 14 to 1800 square feet. Um, and then some two-story homes that would be between 1600 and 2000 square feet. Uh, anticipate, uh, a price point in the low to mid-fours, somewhere in that ballpark. But again, trying to fit a, a need in the market for that affordable, relatively affordable homes. Um, so this is a video showing the, kind of what the vision is for the frontage of the property and the buffer areas. And then street view showing the architectural garage doors. Um, and again, we feel like we've created an architectural style that is not what you would see in all of the new communities, but something that's a little bit more unique, trying to just provide some variety for this area. I think it's been probably 15 or so years since new homes were built in this area. Um, a lot of the communities on Campground Road were done, you know, back in 2006 era. So the mail kiosk. So we have, uh, again, thankful for having received a recommendation of approval from staff. We've read through the conditions. Um, we, you know, don't have any concerns or issues with those. We think we've provided a product that works well with the area, works well with the site. Uh, and when the time is appropriate, I will be happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you again.
Thank you. Again, this is a public hearing. Um, anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Stephanie, if you will, reset the clock. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, please come forward. Okay, this concludes public hearing. Uh, if, um, Mr. Moore, uh, would come back. Um, I did have a couple of questions. If we could put the development back up.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you say that this was for sale or for rent?
For sale.
For sale. What is the price point of these?
Um, starting in the low to mid-fours.
Okay. And, uh, is this a gated community or is this, um...
It is not currently intended to be gated. Um...
How many units is it? I mean, how many houses is it?
Forty-five.
Okay, all right. Okay, that, that was all I had. Commissioner Vice, this is a new district, so.
Yes, I would just like to, um, thank staff, as well as Mr. Moore in working on, on this project, I've been meeting with staff and I've had some ask, um, as it relates to development, even as I ran for office, um, one of the things that I ran on was making sure that we, uh, maintain an ample amount of green space and, uh, areas so that, uh, people can enjoy their communities. Um, I really like the community, it's small and quaint, um, with just forty-five homes, um, I like the architectural renderings of them, uh, the playground, uh, especially the dog park, sidewalks on both sides, um, and with, as you stated, um, it's been some time since, uh, Peach has had some development, um, and so, um, I'm excited, uh, to see, uh, some new growth and, uh, new progress, if you will, uh, on Peach Drive, um, with some, uh, new developments and things that's coming in that area, I think it will fit really, really good, and so, uh, we're just excited and, and grateful for this development. And if no one else has any questions...
Commissioner Angler?
So, great-looking subdivision, I just have one question, because it seems really odd, why would we put the male kiosk all the way in the back? Don't just say, because that's the only extra space left.
Trying...
Because there's a lot of unnecessary trips for everybody that lives there and/or the male person, especially if there's going to be kids in the neighborhood.
Yep, um...
Is there not another space?
Uh, the only other space would be at the, at the amenity center, trying to avoid people having to walk too far from their car, and the Henry County Code actually does allow, as long as the male kiosk is not in the right-of-way, you can use a cul-de-sac, because there's a lot of room to park up against the curb, and that is, that was a section that only had three driveways, we figured it was a, a, a spot, but we could certainly, as we get into the design, if we could find a better location...
I don't particularly care, it's just all the way in the back, that just seems...
I get you, yeah, that makes sense, I mean, yeah, if we can incorporate it into the, uh, and we probably can do it, and, uh, one, one or two parking spaces right at that green area that goes to the amenity center, and, and set it right there, that's, I, I don't disagree, that's not a, that's a good comment, I appreciate that.
With that, I'd like to, uh, make a motion that we approve RZ dash twenty-four dash O eight to rezonate from RA to R five.
Okay, got a motion, just, got a motion and a second, no further discussion, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
County manager, do you have, uh, any county manager comments?
No, ma'am, not this evening.
Okay, um, uh, Stephanie, has anyone signed up for public comment?
No.
Okay. Um, can I get a motion to approve the January twenty-first, um, minutes, I'm sorry?
No, it's December.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor. Uh, upcoming meetings and events, March eleventh, twenty twenty-five, at nine AM is regular scheduled BLC meeting. March eighteenth, at six thirty, is a regular BLC meeting. Is there going to be, um, special call meeting on the eighteenth or before this meeting?
Um, yes, ma'am, we're going to advertise for a four o'clock meeting on, the second meeting in March.
Okay, for a four o'clock special call meeting?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, all right. Uh, Stephanie, can you add that and make sure that that is sent out to, um, the commissioners? I already did that, um... Did I give you, Stephanie, did I give you the reason why I abstained from my vote?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right, um, I just didn't have enough information. Okay, uh, meeting adjourned.